This is Kentucky's Voice Radio covering the latest state and local issues with Tom Fallbush, Bob Scott, and Jim Waters.
And I am Jim Waters welcoming you into the hump day version of Kentucky's Voice. And we're not only radio now, by the way, we're TV as well. You can catch this program again this afternoon on the TV channel 21 right here in Louisville at four and eight PM today. But now we're live on the radio and coming to you here as we do each weekday 11 to noon. I want to talk to you a moment about this show and really this entire media project today. Maybe you've just happened on us, you're new to this, you don't know much about what Kentucky's Voice is. Well, what we're doing here is offering coverage and analysis of today's news from a conservative, common sense, Christian based point of view. And we welcome your comments, your contributions. They're very important in this program that we hear what you're thinking as the conservative audience here in Kentucky. You can text your comments to 502-571-0970, or you can also text Kentucky Voice, KY Voice, KY Voice to 535-555 in order to support and contribute and help us partner with us to expand this conservative, common sense voice in our state. You know, we have a unique opportunity here, folks, to build a real media powerhouse that's needed in Kentucky. That's what we're on our way to doing here. And where else are you going to turn to that you know will be offering reporting, analysis, and opinion from a consistently conservative, common sense, and faith based point of view? We're not, we're not, we're not trying to hide that fact. We're very open about it. We're very intentional about telling you that. And you might not think this is so important right now. You say, well, Trump's in office, things are going our way. But you may think differently about this before it's over. You know, conservatives tend to do this. We tend to wait until things turn left, if you will, before acting. Right now conservatism, populism, it's on the rise. But we know there will come a time when that pendulum will probably swing back the other way. When that happens, what you do today, what you give today, what you invest today will make it possible to have this strong conservative voice that cannot be silenced by an Andy Beshear executive order. Thank God. So I invite you to partner with us again today by texting KY Voice to 53555. And then text us your thoughts about what you hear on the show today, your opinions, any, any concerns you have, comments you have, we want to hear them, questions you have, 502-571-0970. Well, coming up on the show today, President Trump announces millions in federal disaster relief funding for Kentucky storms in April and May. Also, while much of the political heat and drama have been focused on who will replace Kentucky's longtime senior senator and former Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell, the race to replace a congressman who's thrown his hat into the Senate race, opening up his seat, that race is also getting plenty of interest. Former Kentucky State Senator Ralph Alvarado will join us to talk about why he's running and what his priorities will be in his campaign and if elected as he represents the sixth district of Kentucky. But first, the city of Louisville is dropping its sanctuary city policies after getting a letter a couple of weeks ago from the Department of Justice informing Mayor Craig Greenberg that the department considers Louisville to be a sanctuary city. And that letter highlighted the potential consequences of continuing with this designation. Among these consequences would be the loss of millions of dollars worth of federal grants that the city relies on and that all cities rely on really for infrastructure, for other projects. As a result of this letter, now Louisville is now complying with federal law by honoring what are called detainer requests. And this is, these are requests from federal immigration authorities which help really deal with illegal immigration in our city. The city is promising that the Louisville Metro Department of Corrections will notify U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement agents, ICE agents, before releasing an inmate who's in the country illegally and that they will maintain custody of that illegal immigrant for a period of at least, or up to 48 hours. That allows the Department of Homeland Security to come and pick up that individual, take custody of them. Now, you might have heard about sanctuary cities. What are they? Well, basically, these are cities that refuse to cooperate with federal immigration enforcement in arresting and deporting illegal immigrants. They have refused to honor these 48 hour ICE detainers. They've refused to allow local law enforcement officers to inquire about a person's immigration status. They've refused to allow city resources to be used to assist federal immigration authorities. And many of these cities that are sanctuary cities think nothing at all of undermining the rule of law, harboring illegal activity, burdening taxpayers by shielding individuals who violate immigration laws. Well, that is coming to an end in Louisville. Now, sanctuary policies have varied widely between cities, between states, but to all degree, to all, but all of them to some degree prohibit cooperation with federal immigration authorities and are meant to protect people who are in the country illegally. And if they're not meant to, they still do that. So that's the consequence of, of those policies. So in return, for this promise, Mayor Greenberg says the feds have assured him that they will remove Louisville from the list of the nation's sanctuary cities. So Mayor Greenberg has sent a letter to Assistant Attorney General Schumitt yesterday indicating that Louisville would adjust its detainer policy to, in order to avoid litigation over the department's allegations of federal preemption and would begin honoring the 48 hour federal immigration detainers. Mayor Greenberg noted that this change would allow Louisville to be removed from the sanctuary list and it would protect the city from potential loss of federal grants and increased ICE raids. Here's the mayor commenting in a statement he made earlier this week at City Hall. Go ahead with the clip.
The Assistant Attorney General also stated that Louisville's current practice violates federal law. And when federal law conflicts with state or local laws, federal law governs. The federal government's 48 hour detainer is standard practice for the state of Kentucky's Corrections Department. It was also standard practice for the Louisville Department of Corrections until 2017. We are currently the only city in Kentucky that does not follow this practice. Now, when any inmate is booked into our jail, they are fingerprinted and entered into a federal database to which the United States Department of Homeland Security has access. This has been the practice for years, well before I was elected mayor. If Homeland Security tells Metro Corrections that an inmate has a detainer, Metro Corrections notifies DHS when the inmate will be released. Right now, Metro Corrections provides that notice to DHS about five to 12 hours before the inmate is released. Prior to 2017, DHS received 48 hours notice. I have been assured by the United States Department of Justice that if we reinstate the 48 hour detainers for inmates who've been arrested for crimes, Louisville will be taken off the federal sanctuary city list. Accordingly, Metro Corrections will begin honoring the 48 hour federal detainers as soon as practical because the stakes are too high. In turn, Louisville will no longer be considered a sanctuary city by the federal government. This change in designation is critical.
So as our friend and fellow conservatives Scott Jennings said about these developments in Louisville on his show over on, right here, actually on the Salem Radio Network, elections have consequences. He's absolutely right. By the way, let's note for the record, as Mayor Greenberg did, that these 48 hour detainer requirements, this is nothing new, folks. This is not something that just was implemented. They've been around for several years. They were in fact in place in Louisville until 2017, when apparently then Mayor Greg Fisher decided not to cooperate with federal immigration officials. That of course would have been during the first Trump administration. So think about what Donald Trump has done in just six months in office to secure our borders, to deport dangerous criminals from our nation, or those who just give our laws basically the finger and come here illegally and dare us to do something about it. And you know, I find it important to note as well, and to keep noting, that the people I talk to, the ones that are the most supportive of President Trump's immigration policies are immigrants, but they're legal immigrants. Those who've gone through the process of coming here legally, becoming legal citizens. I'm all for immigrants who want to come to this country legally. We are a nation of immigrants. And we're also a nation of laws. And I'm all for immigrants who want to come to this country legally, who want to contribute, who want to abide by the law, who are productive. But if you're going to come here and break our laws, refuse to assimilate into our culture, refuse to learn the language, yes, and mooch off our welfare system, then if I know who you are, I'm glad to let ICE know because I'm saying to you, sayonara, bye bye. Don't let the door hit you where your mama split you. So let us know what you think about this immigration issue. You know, and there, it's, it's time for us to acknowledge there's a big difference between folks who come here legally and those who come illegally and who use up our resources, take jobs, and we can have that debate. We should have it. But let's know what you think. 502-571-0970. Let us know where you stand. And also text us your support. KY Voice to 53555. Support us in our efforts here to build a statewide conservative media powerhouse. What do you think about the immigration issue? What do you think about Louisville now going to be removed from the list of sanctuary cities? It's a positive thing? I think it is. Let's hear from you. Coming up, one of the most watched political races in the country will be in Kentucky's sixth congressional district. Former State Senator Dr. Ralph Alvarado has announced his candidacy for that seat, which is currently held by Representative Andy Barr, who's running for the U.S. Senate. Dr. Alvarado joins us next on Kentucky's Voice. Don't go away, stay with us.
Now, back to Kentucky's Voice Radio, online at KYvoice.org.
Welcome back to Kentucky's Voice. It's hump day. That's the good news here. We've got all kinds of good news, including the race for the sixth district congressional seat, which represents a central, represents much of central Kentucky in the House of Representatives, the U.S. House of Representatives. That's garnering a lot of interest. Congressman Andy Barr, who has held the seat for more than a dozen years, has announced he's running to replace outgoing U.S. Senator Mitch McConnell, who's not running for reelection. So that means we have a vacancy there for the sixth district congressional seat. Six candidates have announced their bids, three Republicans and three Democrats. The latest Republican to announce his candidacy is former State Senator, physician, and a former candidate for Lieutenant Governor. And I will say it, an all around good guy, Dr. Ralph Alvarado. Dr. Alvarado, thanks for joining us today. We appreciate your time. In 2014, you became the first Hispanic Kentuckian elected to the General Assembly. We have a lot of conservative Hispanics who watch this program, and I know they're going to be inspired by your, by your presence in this race and by what you have to say. And then you were the first Hispanic to speak at the Republican National Convention, which happened in 2016 during President Donald Trump's first campaign. And then in 2022, you were hired by Tennessee Governor Bill Lee to become the Volunteer State's Health Commissioner, a position that you just recently resigned to come back and represent Kentucky in Congress. And I'm going to ask you this because it's bound to come up during the campaign. Some might say, make up your mind, which state are you in? Which state do you want to be in? And what's going on with that?
Yeah, so listen, Jim, first, thanks for having me on your show. Great to be here with you. I never left Kentucky. I think that's the important thing to let people know, that this is where my home is. I've built my home here. My family's been born and raised here. My whole married life has been here. I go to church here. My medical practice is here. I've served in the Kentucky State Senate here. So Kentucky's home. I tell people it was a job I took, obviously, to have an opportunity to work for a conservative governor and to apply conservative principles to a Department of Health and to turn around a department. And we did that, exactly that, and it turned it around and really proud of the work that was done there. But I commuted back and forth the entire time. Part of the condition for me to take that role was that I could continue to practice medicine here. And so what I've been doing is, it's a job, yes, but I've commuted back and forth every other weekend the entire time. So I liken it to if you have a child going to college and they choose to go, let's say to the University of Cincinnati for a couple of years, and they visit their parents every other weekend and come home, they come here for holidays, they come here for all the important thing. And then after two years, say, you know, when I went to transfer back to UK, you say, yeah, well, you're still a Kentuckian, come on back. That's the same type of situation. Really learned a lot in that previous role that I'll be able to apply in this role going forward. But we've never left Kentucky. We've been here the entire time.
Well, I think that, and that kind of leads into what I'd like to talk for a moment about, and that seems like your background is in, in healthcare and then your work in Tennessee as well, seems like it's just a natural fit, you know, for addressing some of Kentucky's biggest challenges like the opioid crisis. We've had the whole challenge of runaway inflation, of opening borders. It's affected Kentucky. It's affected other states too, but you've made it clear that you're solidly behind President Trump's agenda. In your campaign announcement, you called, you called yourself Day One MAGA and that your priorities were to close the border, crush the woke left, bring jobs home, and save America. So talk a little bit about your support for President Trump's agenda and what your priorities are as you enter into this campaign.
Yeah, proud to say that back in 2016, when a lot of people were nervous to express support for the president when he was a candidate, I was onstage primetime representing Kentucky 2016. I encourage people to watch that speech. I was really proud of that. I was a delegate in 2016 and in 2020, both times, voting for, for President Trump to be the nominee and to be the president. And so back when people were scared to do that, I was not. I stood forward, I supported him, I've been loyal, knowing that America first is really Kentucky first. And a lot of my speech that I gave during that time was about being, you know, placing America first as well. You know, really, the president needs allies right now. We're in a time of disruption. I think a lot of people are unhappy with how government's been run and where it's gotten to. And really, for me, it's about supporting the president's agenda in terms of trying to boost the economy right now. He's wanting to do that. He's got plans for that. We have to have allies for him to be able to get that economy moving. Secondly, it's about the border. It's the fact that it's been a disaster with an open border for the last four years. My parents were immigrants, this country, legal immigrants. And you're exactly right in your comments earlier, that immigrants come to this country for law and order. They like things to be, you know, aligned, that they can trust law enforcement, they can trust government. That doesn't happen in their home countries. And when they come here for that and see others taking advantage of it, they don't like it. We need to make sure that our borders are secure and that we uphold our immigration laws. And third also, I think, is just bringing back common sense. The president talked about a revolution of common sense in his inaugural address, talking about getting rid of this social and woke agenda out of our government, out of our schools, out of our business environment, just getting back to things that are just fundamentally American. I think people miss that, they want to get back to that, and I'm going to work really hard on those things. And then you mentioned, I think, also the Maha movement, the idea of making America healthy again. I've had an opportunity, was interviewed by Secretary Kennedy back in November, also had an opportunity to meet with him a second time to talk a little bit about a lot of those agenda items, things that are important for the health of America and of our state in the future. And really looking forward to helping that, those, those plans will help our rural hospitals survive, will help Medicaid survive, and kind of have to find a new way in how to deliver healthcare in our rural communities and in our state.
We're speaking with former Kentucky State Senator Dr. Ralph Alvarado from Winchester, Kentucky, who is running to represent the sixth district of our Commonwealth in the U.S. House of Representatives. You've already picked up some pretty meaningful endorsements, Dr. Alvarado, including that of former Senate Majority Leader Damon Thayer, who called you a true conservative, who will put America first, secure the border, and take the fight to the radical left. I can just hear him saying that, you know, somehow. He said he's tough, tested, and ready to win. That's a great endorsement. That's not the biggest one though, is it, in this race? What are your chances of gaining the president's public support? Do you think he'll weigh in on the primary here?
We've had a chance to meet with the White House Office of Political Affairs, a lot of the RNC, obviously, NRCC, a lot of those groups up in DC prior to taking on this race. I know that they're very enthused. Our meetings went very, very well. I did ask for the president's endorsement. I think in the past, he's been quick to give that. And unfortunately, other candidates have often not worked very hard, haven't fundraised. And so I think they, what they want to see is to make sure they've got a candidate who's going to be able to raise the money that's necessary for this race, put in the work. Everybody who's ever worked with me in Frankfurt knows I'm a work mule, that I get things done. When I ran for Lieutenant Governor, I went to all over the state, to as many events as possible, and fundraised for that race. I think the president wants to make sure that he's got a worker and someone who's going to support that. I think we're going to be the ones who will raise the most funds in this race, will be the ones who will be working the hardest in this race. And once he sees that product, I think, will likely to get that endorsement. We're hoping to get it at least, but we've asked for it, and we know that's very important.
Yeah, you know, healthcare is such a huge issue here in Kentucky. We've got a couple of minutes left in this segment. We can talk about Medicaid a little more in the next segment maybe, but just in general, you know, our state just tends to rank poorly in really important health categories like obesity, like diabetes. We mentioned before the opioid addiction. And then, you know, we have such a diverse state in terms of very urban areas, very rural areas, and rural areas where hospitals and healthcare provision just is not as plentiful or they're struggling. How do you see your experience as a doctor and a health commissioner? How do you see that shaping your campaign pitch, especially on healthcare policy? How significant will the Maha movement be for our future here in Kentucky with our challenges? What can it help us with?
Yeah, it's huge. I think it's very important to understand that, you know, we talked about healthy aging. Everybody wants to live as long as possible, but they also want quality years of life as they get older. And so I think it's important that that process starts from the time you're in your mother's womb, right? So what a mom does during pregnancy affects that outcome. Tobacco use, alcohol use, any substance use, all those issues, we've got to be able to help prevent a lot of those things from occurring to begin with. After you're born, what you eat, how you eat, how you exercise, all those things, very important. And you hear doctors talk about that all the time. But I think the Maha movement leans into that and talking about America's, you know, kind of habits effectively. And what you've got is an entire generation of, a bunch of twenty-somethings right now. A lot of moms, young babies, who are worried about what their children are eating, they're worried about what their families are being fed, where that's coming from, is it healthy, is it processed or not? You've got an entire generation on, on social media, talking about processed foods, where they come from. I think the more you focus on that and you get young moms teaching their families and their babies healthy habits, I think you're going to start seeing major benefits in about 20 or 30 years.
We're going to take a quick break. Stay tuned for part two of our conversation with Dr. Ralph Alvarado, who's running for sixth district congressman on Kentucky's Voice. We'll talk more healthcare, what should we do about Medicaid, and education, and other pressing issues. Don't go away, stay with us here on Kentucky's Voice. Thanks for being with us today.
Now, back to Kentucky's Voice Radio, online at KYvoice.org.
And we'd like to hear from you today, 502-571-0970. What are your concerns here? And do you have some thoughts about the Maha movement, about Dr. Alvarado who's joining us? Dr. Ralph Alvarado, who's campaigning to represent Kentucky's sixth district in Congress. And Dr. Alvarado, we appreciate your time today. Do we need to think differently and more innovatively about how we provide healthcare, especially in these rural areas? You know, for example, we have some real barriers that discourage new providers and more nimble approaches, more creative approaches to healthcare. One of those is certificate of need requirements. During last year's legislative session, you know, the General Assembly did pass a CON repeal for freestanding birthing centers, meaning that Kentucky mothers who don't want to have their babies in the hospital can go, they don't have to go to Indiana anymore, basically is what that means, in order to have their, give birth at a birthing center. Many of us, including the Bluegrass Institute, the Americans for Prosperity, would like to push for more repeals so that perhaps smaller providers could begin providing services, particularly in these rural and underserved areas. I know this isn't just a problem in Kentucky. If you're in Congress, of course, you're going to be, be able to maybe do something about this. How important is it to remove these barriers and what can you do?
It's a, it's a touchy topic, as you know, CON. I mean, a lot of it, people always, people who adhere to free market principles and believe in that, it makes sense to them. The difficult part of it is always that healthcare is not a free market system. I mean, there's intolerant requirements in a free market system. You know, if you went to an ER in some countries, if you, you know, they ask you, can you pay? You might have an emergency, and if you don't have the money to pay, sorry, if I have time, I'll deal with it. Here in America, we don't do that, right? The, and doctors ethically don't do that. If you have an emergency, they're going to treat you, they're going to handle the situation and the concern. So it puts a bit of a twist on the entire thing, but you do want to have an incentive. And in some states, they do have less barriers than others on CON and certificate of need. I've often thought about tying that into quality outcomes. If you have a facility in a rural area whose quality measures are not good, perhaps you tie in CON to say, hey, if there's a, if you're allowed to have effectively a monopoly in the county to provide healthcare, but your quality measures drop after a certain period of time, then you open it up and allow free competition. It will require those facilities to maintain a certain level of quality. The hard part, I think, globally for the country is that we have, you know, back in 1980, we were spending half of what we're spending right now in terms of healthcare, and our outcomes are about the same. So you're spending almost double without improved outcomes, and that becomes a concern. You have to ask the question, why is that? Some would argue it's government intervention and government regulations. Some would argue it's insurance, or maybe all of the above, and it makes it more difficult. You know that our providers are operating under a less margin, and so it makes it much more difficult. And states are really bound by a lot of federal rules. In my previous role, what I've learned is that the grant system is provided by the federal government. You could, I could do a lot more if I had, you know, no restrictions or had, you know, strings removed from the federal government and using those funds. In a state, we were able to replace federal funds with state funds for HIV prevention, for example. I got 50% more tests, 50% more things done using state dollars instead of federal dollars because of those restrictions. And when I advocated for that removal of that, Secretary Kennedy, for example, he's in agreement. The problem is typically that in Congress, we have red congressmen who don't trust blue states, blue congressmen who don't trust red states. And so they're not willing to allow federalism to approach where you can give the states liberty to say, here's the money, you go ahead and run the program, they'll be more efficient with it, they know what to do in their state. I think we need to find some way to operate Medicaid in a block grant model. And we've got states who do that now. To do that here in Kentucky would give the state a lot more flexibility and be able to use, require that, those savings that you might generate in that be used to pay higher reimbursements to our providers in order to keep our rural hospitals open. So I think there's unique models in that. A lot of things, again, experiences that I've had, both in legislative role, now executive branch role, that we can apply for those things on a, on a federal basis. And I think would give the states more flexibility and more power to run their own operations.
Yeah, that ultimately is the answer, isn't it? Is this, and if it's not CON repeal, it's, it's, we can't keep doing the same things we've been doing, right? And expect different results. And we need to have the ability or the freedom, if you will, to think differently and innovatively about healthcare, just like we do other areas of our society. You know, the problem with Medicaid too, is whenever we begin discussing any change, it goes to kind of your point about blue states versus red states, but there always seems to be a lot of fear mongering going on here about that we can't do anything. And yet, my question to you is, is Medicaid in its current form and our current policy, is that sustainable for our nation, for our state? Is that sustainable?
Yeah, I think in the, in the, the way we've got it right now, the whole healthcare system, we all know it's broken. Everybody keeps talking about this, right? Everybody knows it. The hard part is that those who are in it don't know anything different, they're scared of anything different that might disrupt the program. And so there's fear typically in that. There's lots of ideas that I have on things that would change the power structure perhaps from what insurance companies would do and put some of that power back into doctors and into patients. So I would always advocate to, you know, instead of saying, I'm going to negotiate a deal with you for certain medications that you use for certain disease states, why not just allow me a budget of, you've got a disease state, we're willing to cover X amount of dollars, and then you and your doctor figure that out? That would save what's right now a failing generic drug system that is having a hard time staying afloat. It would also require Big Pharma to bring their price point down to whatever that amount would be. That way, doctors and patients would be able to afford the medications that are there. Again, I think a lot of folks get very nervous, and so thinking of something different creates fear within the healthcare industry. And I tell everybody, it's like a big web. You've got certain attachment points. If you touch one part of the web, the whole thing shakes, and everybody gets scared that it's going to affect them, cash flow, all those sorts of things. But ultimately, you know, again, pouring water into a leaking bucket that continues to leak, you need a new bucket. And the way we're going right now is going to push us all into a, a single payer system, which is something I don't want to see happen. I've talked to a lot of insurance companies, hospital systems, about taking people that are perhaps frequent utilizers of the healthcare dollar and system, and perhaps offer them a concierge doctor, like the wealthy pay for, and say, assign them someone, let that doctor have free reigns on what they do for that patient. And that person would probably stop visiting the ER and spending millions of dollars, and you would save a ton of money. But you're going to have to have some trust in the providers and trust in those individuals to do that. And it's just going to take a complete disruption. I've got, I've got the ideas on those things.
It's a complicated issue. Or complex, maybe more, it's about, it's complex, as you said, you touch one part of it and the whole part shakes. You know, I think, and I really appreciate your thoughts on that. There's so much more to talk about there, but I wanted to get a couple of more issues in here. You know, one of your strengths is, I think, being well-rounded background. You've served in both the executive and the legislative branches. You served as a Senator, as a state health commissioner, you've run your own business, your own practice there in Winchester. in Winchester. Talk about your record on economic issues, or your thoughts about our economy, about inflation. Are we headed here in the right direction with President Trump's agenda? What do you expect things to look like here? And also, I want to get to education. So, but let's touch on this first before we move on to this.
Yeah, I think, I think for Kentucky, obviously, I think the legislature's done a great job. I was there when we started the process of reducing state income taxes. We know we need that to be competitive with neighboring states, obviously. We've got a lot of states around us who have zero income tax. The closer we can get to that level, the better the state's going to be. We have to find ways to deregulate a lot of the government issues to attract businesses to come to Kentucky. I tell people, we're centrally located, we're in a prime spot. We have a lot of experience in manufacturing. We have to lean into that. And as the president's putting forth policies to attract big businesses back to the country, we want them to land here in Kentucky, where people can have high-paying jobs and do that a lot of that manufacturing. I think the president's view on this stuff is correct. Again, it makes people nervous, but we've already seen a surplus in the monthly, you know, treasury that we've been seeing on a monthly basis. And again, we know that as lowering taxes and lowering those regulations, that will induce more money to come into the treasury. We're starting to see that already. And I think that will help us, and hopefully those monies get applied to reduce our debt moving forward. I think sometimes the CBO and their assessments on things, they claim that it'll cause a deficit. If we start seeing money come into the treasury at high amounts, and you apply that to the to the deficit, it'll help us in that regard. So I think from, we also want to see a reduction in interest rates. I think we're ready for that. That will put just fuel onto the economy. I think the president's going to be taking action on that soon. And as we reduce those interest rates, we'll start seeing things, keep hopefully inflation down, but also allow us to make housing more affordable for folks to be able to come in and be able to buy a home for the first time, and put more money into people's pockets. Again, the president's been doing a tremendous job. I want to continue to lean into those policies as well.
Yeah. We're talking with Dr. Ralph Alvarado, who's running for sixth district congressman here in Kentucky, and appreciate your time today. In terms of pro-life issues, you know, our audience here are very concerned about those issues, pro-life, pro-marriage, traditional marriage. I know you've been, I think you've been pretty supportive of pro-life legislation, a leader on that. And we've made some real progress here on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the states, and again, we've, the beauty of it is, we've gotten it back to the states, where this is where it should be. It's always should have been from the beginning. I've got a story that's probably too long for the remaining time about my experience as a pediatrician, holding a 21 and a half week baby boy, working on him. He was a patient that I admitted to the hospital. When you do that, it changes your perspective on when human beings, when life begins, all that sort of thing. So I'm very staunch supporter of pro-life legislation and doing that. But I think Kentucky has taken action. We've elected pro-life legislators. They've passed laws that are going to protect life. And so I'm very proud of the work that's been done there. I think I was also awarded the Defender of Life by the Baptist Convention for speeches that I talked about, especially during the pandemic, when abortion clinics were kept open, but other medical clinics were shut down. I was very critical of that.
Truly, yeah.
It was, it was, yeah. And so for, for me, I've always been a pro-life, staunch pro-life defender in that regard. So I'm very proud of my record on that. And on our traditional kind of Christian values that we have here in Kentucky, always been a defender of those things.
502-571-0970. We're talking with Dr. Ralph Alvarado, and this off our Kentucky's Voice text line. Dr. Alvarado needs to run for governor, governor in all caps, to help keep Kentucky conservative. So you have a fan listening in today, and that's great. Dr. Alvarado, since the campaign really is a job interview, let me ask you about how you would respond to the situation we have seen happening here in Congress, where basically the Speaker, Mike Johnson, he sent the members home early here for the traditional August break, after some began clamoring for a vote on releasing the Epstein files. Johnson says he wants to let the administration do what it said it would do and is doing, but do it in its own way and its own time. Do you agree with that?
I mean, I think it's, yeah, I think people want to know. I believe in government transparency. I do believe in that. And I think, I don't know what's in those files. Most people want to know. And the longer we kind of, people don't know what's in them, the more they want to know a lot of times. I don't know if there's information that's classified. I'm not sure about what's in that. I think I'm going to trust the president and his approach on how he's doing these things, and how the Attorney General's doing these things. And there's probably going to be reasons we're going to find out later as to why or what's in those. But, but I do think it's important to allow the president to go ahead and go through the process of, he's talked about that in the past. I think we need to allow him the ability to get those out when he thinks they need to go out.
And I, we don't have enough time to talk about education, but just a word about that. I truly appreciate your support for school choice. I know you've told me you continue to support that. We had a defeat here of Amendment Two in, in the fall. But we've got a lot, I think we're going to have a lot of opportunities here. And the federal big beautiful bill includes a school choice element. And
I was a very proud supporter of that. I filed that bill every year when I was in the state senate. And I spoke out about that. The big beautiful bill does allow $1,700 tax credit, a lot of good stuff.
Thank you, Dr. Ralph Alvarado. We really appreciate your time today. Thanks for coming on, and we look forward to following you throughout this campaign. Stay with us for our final segment of Kentucky's Voice. Coming up, President Trump announces millions in federal disaster relief funding. Don't go away.
Now, back to Kentucky's Voice Radio, online at KYvoice.org.
And we're back for our final segment of Kentucky's Voice today. Thanks for joining us today here. We're here each weekday, 11 to noon. Jim Waters in with you, as I am on most Wednesdays. And we'd love to hear from you, 502-571-0970, is our Kentucky's Voice text line. And this off the text line, a clarification, says the texter, one comment made yesterday by Andrew, that would be Andrew Cooper, our host, that a water truck hit a protester at Broadway during the protest. Instead, he says protesters swarmed around the truck as it was moving slowly, not the other way around. And he was just helping us clarify. So we appreciate that. You know what that means is, some, he was listening, paying attention to what was being said, and we want you to do that. And we want you to think for yourself. Don't just, don't just be a sponge. You know, think for yourself on these issues. Let us know what you think. 502-571-0970. Very interesting conversation there, I think, with Dr. Ralph Alvarado, one of six candidates running for the sixth congressional district in Kentucky. Three Republicans, three Democrats, and certainly, we're going to welcome other candidates on here as well. And Dr. Alvarado served as the Tennessee Health Commissioner, has a unique perspective on healthcare and healthcare policy, which is going to become even more important. You know, the Maha, the Make America Healthy Again movement, has really ignited a move to a healthier America. And not through big government programs, but through government doing its job of looking out for the folks, reducing unnecessary regulation, highlighting things in our food, highlighting things in our food supply, the elements that should not be there. But, you know, again, leaving it up to companies largely as to what they do. Many of them have responded, this is the right way to do it. You know, you give the American people the information, and they'll demand the change. They'll make sure it happens. And we've seen that here in Kentucky. That's why a lack of transparency, a lack of information, a lack of open records in meetings, this is a big problem. We talked about this on the show last time, about a court case here, where a parent here in Jefferson County, Miranda Stovall, wanted to see, and wanted to get a copy of a health survey, a very intrusive survey, that her daughter in the Jefferson County Public Schools was going to be given. And she said, I've, I already opted out, but they gave it to her anyhow. And her daughter wanted to be submissive and didn't want to cause problems. But, you know, the district just went ahead and did that anyhow. They wouldn't let the parents see the survey, wouldn't let her get a copy of it. Said, you can't have a copy of it because it's copyrighted. Well, where does that end? So that, that's why, but we're not just talking about needing transparency, for the sake of transparency itself. We're talking about needing it so that we have the information we need to push for the right policies, to advocate for the necessary spending, to highlight waste, fraud, and abuse. And, you know, that's really what's caused the biggest stir with the whole Doge movement. It's not so much the program they've set up, it's what it's uncovered, it's what it's revealed, it's what's being reported on, the tremendously wasteful spending, and, and the tremendously misdirected spending that, like in USAID and other organizations. After that information came out, the American people were fine with changes, most of us. And the only ones who weren't, were those who just don't like Trump for some reason, or just don't want to go along, or just don't, or just think we need these big government, they're big government types. But, but, you know, most Americans are reasonable. Most Kentuckians are reasonable. I think most Americans are center-right, and so are most Kentuckians. That doesn't mean they're right-wing radicals, but it does mean they're, they do respond to common sense arguments. And when they get the information, they're usually ready to act. That's why you'll find government bureaucrats, and educrats, and officials who don't want to get that, give that information out, because they know that the information is power. We need that. Now, President Trump has announced, and he tweeted out, that the great Commonwealth of Kentucky, he, that he's approved two declarations for Commonwealth, for two storms in April and May, one for $28.9 million, the other for $27.1 million, for a total of $56 million, he said, and I quote, "I spoke to Governor Andy Beshear and informed him of his, this approval. The governor thanked me and said, our people are doing a very good job. I love Kentucky." Well, not yet. That picture doesn't come yet. Not yet. Not yet. Not yet. You'll get it in a second. Look, we're glad that the governor liked this, and, and we're glad that President Trump loves Kentucky. I just wonder if that means if he loves Thomas Massey now, because Thomas Massey is one of our six congressmen here. But I don't think that means he's changed his mind there. But we'll see. But this money, what's this money for? $56 million in federal disaster relief aid. And, you know, we have short memories, so let me remind you, we had devastating storms. Do you remember those? They hit our state in, in April, and then another one in May. It was a one-two punch of destruction that left communities reeling. The April 2025 storm this year, on April 2nd, brought tornadoes, straight-line winds, flooding, landslides, mudslides. Four tornadoes were confirmed in our state, hitting areas like, like our areas here and across the state with widespread damage. Heavy rainfall caused flash flooding, a tragic incident in Frankfurt, where a young student was swept away by floodwaters while heading, heading to a school bus stop there. The storms claimed at least seven lives, including that young man's life. Property damage was extensive. Homes, businesses, vehicles were destroyed. 150,000 people lost power across our state and across southern Indiana. Governor Andy Beshear declared a state of emergency, mobilizing the National Guard. FEMA stepped in, offering assistance for stored damaged vehicles and homes in several counties. And their focus, of course, was on immediate relief at that time, clearing the debris, restoring the power. But, you know, there's, there are prolonged effects of this storm. When people lose their homes and lose their property, that doesn't just get fixed in a day or a week. And then, on top of that, comes the May storms. On May 16th and 17th, only about six weeks after the April storms. And this was probably even more, there was even more destruction in this storm. A very violent storm system, including an EF4 tornado that tore through southern Kentucky, hitting Laurel and Pulaski Counties in particular, very hard on May 16th and 17th. Another tornado, rated EF2, struck Washington County on May 30th. These storms brought widespread tornadoes. They leveled neighborhoods. They destroyed infrastructure. The May storms were deadly, or at least 28 fatalities reported across Kentucky, Missouri, and Virginia. In Kentucky alone, 19 deaths were confirmed, 17 in Laurel County, very tragic situation. Again, a state of emergency declared by Governor Beshear. Kentucky's been hammered by extreme weather with over 50 deaths from storms and flooding in the last few years. So this $56 million in disaster relief funding will help. It will help with public assistance, individual assistance, disaster recovery centers. It will help with economic support, like disaster unemployment assistance, workers who lost their jobs due to the storms, those who are helping maintain local economies in hearted areas like Laurel County. This will be used for help. Now, how to access help? You can apply at disasterassistance.gov via the FEMA app. You can download the FEMA app. Just go to your Play Store, if you have a Google smartphone, and download the FEMA app, or you can just call 800-621-3362. You can, you can contact local governments for debris removal contracts. You can call the Kentucky Business Emergency Operations Center. That number is 502-607-6811. Now, the question becomes, will this require a special session of the legislature? Now, our state constitution requires the governor to issue calls for a special session and to determine the agenda. In this case, it would be, is there additional disaster relief funding needed on top of what the president has promised? But the problem is, this administration has not worked with the legislature. Now, you can put that up. He has not had a good working relationship with the General Assembly. He's acted in unilateral fashion. We saw that, of course, during COVID in particular. He's not done a very good job of updating the legislature on how the administration is using the disaster relief funds that were already made available to them. And he certainly has not, as one senior senator told me, has not made the case for a special legislative session. A special legislative session costs millions of dollars on a daily, on, you know, millions of dollars to hold, hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions, on a daily basis. So this is a cost to taxpayers, and there needs to be a good case made. The governor needs to call it, and he has to decide the agenda. And the agenda must not go beyond whatever the agenda is on the call. So he determines the agenda, and that's, and the legislators are limited to addressing only what's on that agenda. So I think it appears that with this $56 million, that hopefully legislators will, and the governor will get together on this. I know the legislators have tried to work with this governor, but he has not done a very good job. That's his lowest grade, in my view, is, is his work with the legislature. You got to do it. You got to do it. We have three branches of government for a reason, and he has not done that. So I think we should save taxpayer, the taxpayers, they're hard-earned dollars. If we need to spend additional money on disaster relief, let's do it in, when the legislature comes back into session. This is going to be a budget session, so they can open up the budget, they can spend dollars if they need to from a rainy day fund, that's what it's for. But we don't need to waste taxpayer dollars with a special session unless it's absolutely necessary. And with $56 million now coming our way, I'm not convinced it is. I don't think the case has been made. And finally, today, KET, you remember, we brought you this story last week about how public broadcasting has had their funding cut by the Trump administration, and by the Doge-related cuts. And so, as a result of that, KET, the Kentucky Educational Television Network, had said they would not cover the Fancy Farm political picnic this year, kind of the unofficial kickoff of the political season here in Kentucky, something the KET has done for years. But now, that's not the case, because they will be able to cover the St. Jerome Parish picnic and Fancy Farm after previously believing they could not because of federal budget cuts. And that's because the Kentucky Chamber of Commerce is, has offered to sponsor the public television coverage of Fancy Farm's political picnic, known for its tasty barbecue and rough-and-tumble political speeches, as the Herald Leader puts it. And the statement from Shay Hopkins says, "We're grateful to the Kentucky Chamber, a longtime corporate partner and supporter of KET, for helping us." So that's the way it should happen, folks, should be sponsors. And those who want to see it happen should help make it happen. Taxpayers should not be forced to fund television programs. I love KET, but let it be done other ways. Thanks for joining us today on Kentucky's Voice. You have a great rest of the day now, and God bless.